Okay.
Yep, you are also.
Okay, thank you. This meeting of the Coventry Town Council will now come to order at 6:30 PM. Roll call, Ms. Ludwig.
Here.
Mrs. Shockley?
Here.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Dixon, here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Ludwig will lead in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Republic.
For which this stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Sorry, I didn't realize I was on mute.
I may have a motion.
Mr. LeBlanc to curate.
Have a motion to recess into executive session per Rhode Island General Law 42465A1 for the following: Discussion of Job Performance, Character, Physical or Mental Health of a Person or Person's, specifically for the council to interview the candidate for the following board, Friends of Human Services. Do I have a sec? May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call vote, Ms. Ludwig.
Yes.
Mr. Shockley?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
For yays, no nays, the motion is approved. Members of the council, please access the Zoom link for the executive session. Thank you.
Maybe we could just, and I don't know if it's part of the meeting, congratulate Hillary Lima on becoming the representative for District Four.
It's our own technical issue.
Okay.
One, two, three.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Lisa.
Hello.
Evening.
Hi, Ben. It's gonna be full screen tonight. Packed, I should say.
Joanne?
Yes.
Um, was Miss DeGregory supposed to be on the call this evening because she did not come onto the Zoom?
Uh, yes, she was.
Okay. She was not on the Zoom, so we will reschedule her.
Okay.
Maybe you can find out if she had technical difficulties or something we can do to expedite the interview, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Before we start, maybe we could just, and I don't know if it's part of the meeting, congratulate Hillary Lima on becoming the representative for District Four.
It's not on the agenda, but perhaps we can slip it in. So, uh, let me see where we can.
That was my public comment.
Okay.
That's what we think. Just be advised, everyone, this is going out live already.
It is. It's not seven o'clock.
We had to do it to start the opening of the meeting.
Okay. Okay, the public meeting is now resumed at 6:59 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn from executive session?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Ludwig. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Shockley?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, yes. For yays, no nays, motion passes. Members of the public, the council met an executive session per Rhode Island General Law 42465A1 for the following: Discussion of Job Performance, Character, Physical or Mental Health of a Person or Person's. Discussion of job performance, character, physical or mental health of a person or persons specifically for the council to interview candidates for the following board: Friends of Human Services. Our interviewee was not available, so no appointment will be made for the Friends of Human Services this evening. May I have a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session?
Make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mrs. Shockley. Any discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Ludwig?
Ms. Ludwig, yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Yes. For yeas, no nays. Motion passes. Members of the public, welcome. Welcome to our town manager. Welcome to members of the school committee, Mr. Murray, Ms. Clooneyan, Chairperson Patno, our town clerk, Ms. Ametrono, our finance director, Ms. Lisa Mills, Mr. Dave Florio from the school committee, Superintendent Craig Levis, our finance director, Mr. Harold Sands for the school committee, a school committee member, Mr. James Pearson, Director of Planning and Development, Mr. Crossman, Director of the Coventry Public Library, Ms. Wigan, Administrative Officer, Mr. Ed Wazika, Director of Parks and Recreation, Ms. Blumenthal, Chief Fred Heiss from the Public Safety Department, Mr. Kevin McGee from Department of Public Works, and Ms. Monique Hool. Welcome to all of you. This is a joint meeting of the Coventry Public Schools and the Town Council. Chairman Patno, would you please open your meeting?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to call our meeting, the school committee meeting, open at 7:02. Could we have a roll call, Mr. Levis, please?
Ms. Patno?
Here.
Mr. Florio?
Yeah.
Mrs. Clooneyan?
Yeah.
Mr. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Thank you. Item C2, approval of Town Council meeting minutes of March 22, 2021, reference pages six through 18. Madam Clerk, did you receive any written corrections?
I did not.
Okay. Are there any council members who wish to make any comment about the minutes for March 22? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes for March 22, 2021?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Ludwig. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please raise your hand. Thank you. For yeas, no nays. The motion passes. Item D1, appointment of a member to the Friends of Human Services. May I have a motion to postpone the appointment of a member to Human Services until a later meeting in May?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the amendment, or second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Ludwig. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please raise your hand to postpone. Thank you. For yeas, no nays. The motion is approved. Appointment of one member to the Patuxa River Authority, reference page 20. May I have a motion to appoint the following to the Patuxa River Authority? To a term expiring June 4, 2024, we appoint Paul Lockett. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. May I have?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Ludwig. Any discussion? Okay, please raise your hand if you approve the motion. Thank you. For yeas, no nays. The motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Lockett. Continue on with your good work with the Patuxa River Authority. We're now open for agenda item E, public hearing for discussion and our action. May I have a motion to open public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. Do I have a second?
Second it.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call vote, Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? For yeas, no nays. The vote is four to zero. The motion passes. The public hearing is now open. The presentation on the Sua Enterprise Fund is not available this evening. May I have a motion to postpone the presentation on the Enterprise Sua Fund until May 10, 2021? May I have a second? A motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Ludwig. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc? Mrs. Dixon? For yeas, no nays. The vote is four to zero. The motion to postpone passes. I'm now inviting Mr. Superintendent Craig Levis to present on the Coventry Public Schools budget. Mr. Levis, would you please share your screen?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
It says that I do not have host-disabled participant screen sharing, so.
It should be all set now, Mr. Levis.
Okay. Let's see. Bear with me, please. All right. All right. Everybody can see the screen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Before I get started, just quickly, I just want to thank our teachers. It's Teacher Appreciation Week all week, and I can't think of a time more in my life where I have appreciated our educators more than what they've done the last 14 months. So I just wanted to publicly thank them for their work. Secondly, I want to thank the school committee. We're putting forward tonight a presentation. Part of it is the budget that the school committee approved, that putting forward a budget that will meet the needs of our students, especially moving beyond the pandemic. And I want to thank them for their support. And finally, I just want to notify the public that if anybody would like to come in or meet with myself and Finance Director Mr. Sands virtually or coming in person, please reach out to us. We're more than welcome to do that. Tonight's, you know, gonna, we have 14 slides, but I'll move through them fairly quickly so that the public will have an opportunity to ask questions. This first slide is our budget slide. And I think the thing, what I want to highlight is, in this budget, we are asking the town for $1,883,144. You know, we're coming off of a year where we were level funded. We presented consistently through last year that we could not function on level funding. Other highlights I want you want to see is that we did receive an increase in state aid of $624,000. But also, I think what is significant, and we had a good conversation today, myself and Mr. Sands, we met with Finance Director Ms. Mills and Mr. Marshawn, your town manager, and I think these conversations we're having are going to be helpful for us moving forward as one community. We are using $700,000 of fund balance. We used approximately $1.5 million of fund balance in FY21, and we're using approximately $700,000 in FY22. We know this is not ideal, but, you know, we didn't have, don't have many other alternatives in terms of moving forward and meeting the needs of our students and families. This is a slide that we showed the other night, and I'll go through it quickly. The graph on the right is the vision of the graduate, and it's a pre-K to 12 articulation of different characteristics, dispositions of our students as they progress through the system. You will be having a presentation at the council from several individuals from our high school that put this together. I believe Dr. Dixon, you on the school committee when we voted on this, and this is what's going to drive the future of education in Coventry. So we're excited to get that presentation to you. This budget, it's going to focus on the student academic social-emotional needs post-pandemic. We're going to continue to expand opportunities for all students. It's important for us to maintain the level, current level of services, and you'll see when we talk about our COVID budget, we're actually using those dollars for infusion of support for our students as we exit the pandemic. We're going to continue to work on developing and implementing high-quality curriculum pre-K to 12. Our teachers are our greatest resource. Our staff is our greatest resource, and we need to invest in them. We've been focusing on professional development, but we really need to target the professional development for staff and break it down to what do individual teachers and educators and support staff need. An example is this year, in terms of disinfecting, sanitizing our building, all of our custodial staff had to be trained specially in terms of proper protocols. This is for everybody. This targets everybody in our district. We're focusing on increasing Coventry CT enrollment. I hope that you've seen some of our advertisement that we've been putting on Channel 10. We're advertising with 105.5 and Mr. John Ferenti and Chris DePaul have been very helpful with us advertising locally, so we need to put a push on that. This is something that's important to both the town and the schools, the maintenance requirement of 2.5%. So 2.5% of our operating budget in FY22, and it will go up to 3% in FY23, has to be identified as maintenance of our buildings, and that's approximately between, you know, almost $1.9 million next year. So we have to allocate $1.9 million for maintenance, and we're fortunate that we have a lot of tradespeople, and that accounts for a significant amount of that. But that's something that's important to look for as we move forward, and any reduction in funds that we receive could greatly impact this, and it has an impact on the town. And then finally, the use of federal COVID funds. We're using them for needed interventions for students, and we're also using it to address the structural deficit in terms of how we're using the support, and you'll see it in the slide that we talked about. The budget increases, contractual increases, approximately $735,000, additional staffing positions in the local budget. We'll talk about that in a little bit, approximately $343,000. Increase in our district tuitions for charter schools, pathways, and CTE. And I have to just stop here. I know there's been comments made, and we've had many meetings where we discussed this, but the culture in the community, and that's why it's so important, and I stress the fact that the school committee has supported a budget that's going to address the needs. We have many eighth graders whose families are looking at other alternatives programs, not just CTE, many private schools. And obviously, there's a portion of that, many times it's a legacy. You know, I went to a certain high school. My kids are going to go to that private high school. But a big part of that is the lack of, the concern about the lack of financial support for education. I heard your meeting the other night and talking about, I think Mr. Marshawn did a phenomenal job talking about services and how a decrease in fund impacts services, impacts road quality, impacts the services that Parks and Rec provide, impacts the library, the DPW, things that people want in a community. But I feel, and I say this all the time, the language we use, the language our elected officials use, the language, the leaders that have been put in charge of our departments, in the school department, the town, the language we use is so crucial in terms of putting forward this budget, and I can't stress that enough. People are tired. They tell me they're tired of the fighting. They're tired of worrying, will there be sports? Will there be activities? So again, we put forward a budget that addresses all these needs. Transportation is an increase of approximately $200,000, and then we talked a little bit, the maintenance requirement from 2% to 2.5% is an increase of about $410,000. So these are staffing as of April 30 of 2021. The first bulleted positions are positions that we need to go into the local budget. Part-time vision of the graduate advisor, that person's going to work pre-K to 12 to support the vision of the graduate work throughout our district. This position was previously a proficiency-based graduation requirement coordinated to high school. So this is a position we had, we eliminated, and when we eliminated it, we had talked to Ms. Maycumber about putting it back on. We eliminated it for a year, and we wanted to put it back on as this vision of the graduate advisor. Part-time guidance, this came out with our NEAS visit, that we do not, we have eliminated a full-time guidance position, I think it was three years ago. And in order for NEAS to meet the requirements, we needed to increase the time of guidance. And so this is a part-time guidance council that we need at the high school. Part-time science, full-time math, full-time reading support, these are positions for our middle school. These are positions that we took two years to rebuild a schedule, a schedule that met the needs of students by providing more in-class or, you know, longer periods. It also provided support that the teachers needed in terms of working together, working on curriculum, common planning time. And I want to applaud our administrators and our teacher leaders at the middle school for putting this together. Mr. Cowell was involved with that. But these are the positions we need to support students. We have full-time reading support, part-time itinerant support, and full-time special educator. These were needs that we have within our district, and that these are needs that we need to remain, and these positions need to remain to address student need. We can't fund these with COVID funds because these will be needed. I put the projected local 343. We're still looking at positions. Every year, I think it's important for the community and the council to know that we don't just start every year off and saying, okay, we have, you know, 450 positions, and that's all we have, and we're building off that. Every year, we look at every level, elementary, every elementary school, we look at every grade level, we look at special education needs. Students require certain services, and it's written in their IEP. We have to make sure that we have the appropriate staffing to meet those needs. At the middle school and the high school, we look at class size, but we also look at the different needs that students have. And at the high school, it's about course selection and requirements, and every year, we look at how many, you know, ninth grade English do we need, how many honors classes? We look at AP and class size. And if there's not a certain amount of classes, students in a class, we reduce that class. So it's important to understand that we look at all of this every single year. We put forward the staffing that we need to acquire to educate our students. So this is where we're at right now, but we're looking very closely at elementary enrollment, and depending on the numbers, we could end up reducing a kindergarten class here, another grade three or grade four. Because these numbers, because of the pandemic, registration is happening at a different rate than it has in the past. So it's important to understand that this is, that component is ongoing. And then the projected COVID, these are positions that are funded by COVID funds right now, but we believe that they're going to be needed, and that's our responsibility. I'm not looking at the town. Like, we recognize that we need to find a way to fund these. Our custodial staff, we had increased our custodial staff by eight full-time equivalents this year. But it's important to understand that over the last 15 years, we had reduced our custodial staff by 12 individuals. So we have to even put back those 12. We put back eight because of the sanitation requirements. You know, we have custodians sanitizing the building, electrostatic spraying when students are out, and, you know, the requirements to clean classrooms in between lunches and all the sanitation that is required around bathrooms and common areas and areas that are frequently touched by doorknobs. So we believe that we can't go back on this, but we'll have to find a way long-term in terms of how we will fund that. And the other one is floater nurses. We put on COVID nurses this year to support the, how we handle students that need to be quarantined, or how, you know, if students are, you know, identified or potentially identified as positive. We have to isolate them. They've been incredible help. But the floater nurses for next year are really about, when we have to bring in a nurse, if we lose a nurse and someone is out, we have to bring in a nurse from an agency. Often, that's about $95 an hour. So we're going to use COVID funds to hire a couple of floater nurses, and we'll be able to monitor the cost of what we typically spend in terms of bringing in agency nurses, which is significant, versus hiring two floater nurses that we can use that are district nurses that can assist us anywhere. We actually think this will be cost-effective, so what that means down the road is funds that we allocate for nursing in terms of agencies will more than likely cover the cost of these floater nurses. We'll have a good opportunity to experience that next year using COVID funds. So this is something that's important, and I missed about 20 minutes of your presentation the other night. I'm not sure if there was a discussion on the town side of COVID funds, but it's important to understand that we're receiving a significant amount. It's important to understand that we're receiving a significant amount of money from the federal government. There was funds that were received. The earliest we received them was August of twenty twenty. Those were S R one funds, the CARES Act money that we were going to receive, the governor, previous governor had utilized that those funds to supply state aid. So for us, it was about six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars that we were going to get in April or May, but those funds were used to, to replace state aid. So we didn't really see that as additional funding. What we did see was seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars for S R one funds. And we utilized that to offset costs in, in this year FY twenty one. And then between S R two funds, which we, we still don't have access to, that's a, a little over two million dollars. And then there's approximately five million dollars, a little more as our three funds. While it sounds like this, you know, amount of money and it is. We, our approach is to, to come to the school committee with a plan on how we're going to utilize those funds. And a big part of that is obviously interventions for students and for families. So we've, we talked about the staffing in the, in the first part, we're using reading teachers, math intervention is in building substitutes. Right now, our building sub, we have one building sub per building. What we're trying to do in the elementary is add an additional building sub in, in five elementaries and then in the. Washington Oak where all of our pre K is, we want to add a, a building sub just for pre K. So we believe that this will actually be cost effective, better for kids because of continuity. You know, when we have pre K students in early childhood and, you know, grades one, two. It's important to have consistency, when we have somebody out and we rotate people in and out, it definitely doesn't provide consistency. So I think this will be better, again, this is using the COVID funds, this is not impacting our local appropriation. And so we, we truly believe that that will be better for kids and, and ultimately maybe cost effective. Right now, this year we've had fill rates of maybe sixty percent, which means only, you know, sixty percent of the absences, vacancies are being filled forty percent off. And so this should help us with that. At the middle school, special education teacher, reading interventionist, a math interventionist, two building substitutes and intensive teachers assistant. Again, we have one reading specialist right now in a middle school of, you know. Ten thou, ten, you know, thousand fifty, eleven hundred kids, which is ridiculous. So we're going to use COVID funds, all these, all these educators will be targeted to support students. We don't have a math interventionist, this will be adding a math interventionist to, to the bills. And again, same with the building substitutes, that consistency and coverage. We also have, you know, teachers can cover, we pay them covers, this should reduce that. So we're, again, we're, we're hoping to look at having these additional building substitutes next year and collecting data. It's actually cost effective that we'll be able to use the funds that we typically use for substitutes. For all, you know, coverage for paying a teacher that has a free period to cover another period, will actually. Be able to cover these building substitutes moving forward. The high school, we're looking at two building substitutes for the same reason I mentioned. The custodians, we have the eight additional custodians that we put on this year and the two floating nurses that I spoke about before. So this is significant investment in personnel for this year. Then we also have our summer budget, which is summer camps that we're paying for. Academic intervention such as high-density tutoring that we've been working with Brown University and the Edinburgh Institute. And also our structured literacy that we've been working that we did last year, which is very effective. It's a specific way of teaching reading, we have individuals that are trained, we've had students said last year demonstrated and gained. So that we think it's a great intervention. We're also put out many, many RFP, you know, request of proposals from teachers to run different programs at the different levels. We want to support as many programs as we can for kids this summer, both academic and social emotional. And then the Chromebooks, we're going to be taking the, paying for the Chromebooks instead of leasing. So that one-time purchase for night of approximately nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. That's going to equate in a reduction of over approximately four hundred thousand dollars out of our operating budget for the next three years. So that's the COVID that we have approved to date. We also will be going back to the school committee to look at purchasing vans. Right now, our, our outer district statewide transportation is approximately six to eight hundred thousand dollars a year. This year, they projected it to go FY twenty one up to one point two million dollars. But we're able to negotiate and, and get a savings of about four hundred and some odd thousand dollars that we use to bring back activities and sports. And also to go forward with our vehicle lease. But we're also, the, these vans that we purchased, we're, we're, again, we haven't had the approval, we need to go back with the school committee. But our belief is that by purchasing five vans and paying for drivers. In all the costs a, a, associated with the vans, that could save us approximately, and, and this is a conservative estimate, we believe of about three hundred thousand dollars a year moving forward. Of our outer district transportation. So again, we'll use COVID funds to purchase the vehicles. But those vehicles and drivers will help us save approximately three hundred thousand dollars per year moving forward. So again, that's why we talk about use of COVID funds, not only in terms of impacting student performance, getting students, you know, that learning loss we talked about. Some of the other areas that we'll bring forward to the committee will be looking at social emotional, there's some ideas that we have and that we had brainstormed and always probably brought forward some ideas. We've brainstormed a lot of ideas, but we can also look at how can we identify, for instance, one of the area ideas. I've had that other communities have used like community liaisons, it would be social workers that would be community-based, that would work for us. They would support the families that are truly struggling. Sometimes we have families, they're doing the best they can, their kids are having challenges and they struggle to get the students in school. And unless we can support them at that point where they're struggling, it's difficult to get them in. And we know truancy is not the step that we want to go. So there's ways that we can partner, Mr. Robalad does this all the time, that there's ways we can use these funds to just provide additional supports to our families. So these are some of the things that we've, we've done in terms of saving money, long-term, short-term. Because I think it's important, you know, we're not looking to say that, there was comments made, I know about looking for us at three point one percent for the next ten years. You know, I, I don't know where we'd be if we didn't receive the COVID money. It would have been a disaster for FY twenty one and I don't know where we would be, to be honest. However, we understand that we need to come up and I, and I know Mr. Marshon's been, been talking about this. We need to find a point where there's stability in budgeting. And where the community doesn't have such incredible swings, or these demands of four percent or fear of four percent every year. So we recognize this in an ongoing basis. And these are some of the things that we've done to, to save money and we continue to look at opportunities to generate revenue to cut our expenses. We've signed a virtual net metering contract that will save approximately eight billion dollars over twenty-five years. And this is where we'll be receiving electricity from, right now, this project's going to be in Smithfield. Side ninety-one log road and. This will come online probably the last quarter of FY twenty-two or the first quarter of FY twenty-three, which is when we'll definitely need, you know. In, in, in approximately savings of, I think, a hundred and forty-some odd thousand the first few years. We've received over two million dollars in competitive grants over the last two years. We have two state pre Ks, which benefit our community, approximately twenty students in each pre K, there's no cost to families. And that covers the cost of the teachers, resources, assessments, materials. This Denise Ahearn was the author of that grant. We have received a significant amount of money, a little over five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to write curriculum and purchase curriculum materials. You know, Dr. Dixon has asked us on several occasions about curriculum. These are funds that are not local money, so Mr. Coward had worked with numerous administrators and teachers at different levels. These grants were written at the secondary level and at the pre K level. And we're, we're benefiting from it right now in terms of our English Language Arts curriculum. And that allowed us to free up funds, local funds to purchase the elementary curriculum. And this curriculum is also about professional development, it isn't just purchasing materials, checking off a box. This is giving teachers the tools that they've had, this is going to be paramount in terms of us improving our test scores. We have incredible educators, but we haven't been providing them with the tools. We purchased a curriculum called Journeys for English Language Arts several years ago and it was highly rated. But recently, our, we have had teams working with a nonprofit organization called Ed Reports, which. It's kind of like consumer reports, they don't have any real skin in the game other than they are objectively looking at high-quality curriculum. And so they, Journeys wasn't rated high as a high-quality curriculum. Coventry spent hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars purchasing it several, several years ago. Now we're able to purchase high-quality curriculum, I know Mr. Coward had spoken about this before. Something that's crucial and I don't know if the community's aware, and I know we've had a couple of presentations about around special education, but. When I first came on board, when Mr. Wilson, our special ed director came on board. There was about fifty-six students we had with disabilities who were placed out of district. And if that's the least restrictive environment, if that's a place for them, then that's fine. But all that money, if a tuition's average forty thousand, that money just tracked with the student, then you get a, you have to look at transportation costs to get students there. I can tell you today, we have nineteen of our own students and we have a total of twenty-six students. There are other students from, that come to us from other situations who are out of districts. So we've cut that number in half and that's because we've invested, when we talk about special education teachers, we've invested in our own schools. We've built programs such as the SCORE program, the STRIVE program, these are between. Hopkins Hill, Western Coventry, we have the bridge program at the high school, I mean, at the middle school. We've expanded our transition program at the high school and we have other programs, I'm sure I'm leaving some out. But by investing the dollars in our community, we're able to not only bring students back. And simple things like this, think about anybody that has children, the children go to school. And there's a birthday party and they're asked to go to the birthday party, right, things that are just common. When you have a child with a disability that's never been educated in their school, they don't go to birthdays. They don't have friends in the neighborhood. So these are things, these unanticipated consequences of having all these students out of district. If a student goes out of district and that's truly the best place for them, then that's where they need to be. We've built capacity within our, in our district, and so when students come to us, we've had students move in or an out-of-district placement. And we give them time, we assess, we go out and visit, we meet with the families, and we've been able to bring them back because we have programs within our district. So it's not only helping us save dollars, but it's also helping us avoid additional expenses. As students come within our schools, progress through the district, we have programs that'll address their needs. And I think that's significant, if you look at just the monetary cost of those twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight students that we've been able to reduce out of district tuition. Is significant and that's something that we do in an ongoing basis, looking at our special education program. We have many parents who are champions for the programs, what we've done. I'm sure you've heard, attended any of our school committee meetings, we have some that speak often. We've renegotiated various contracts for lo, for long-term cost savings and favorable contract language. We were asked, and I've said this many times, but I'll say it one more time, we were asked by former leadership. To go back to our unions and reopen the contracts. I sat at a table with all the unions leaders in the town. We went to work immediately with our, our teachers' union, we needed to save a half million dollars for FY twenty-one. I, I, our former finance director, Ms. Mangrielli, said we need a half million dollars, right, we need to go into this. And to the credit, and this was a full-blown negotiations, we were able to save a half million dollars last year. We were able to renegotiate language and put in some, some language in the contract that. Will, will save us money down the road, but also, you know, you hear all this about management rights and, and unions and we were able to get back some management rights. We were able to increase co-share on our healthcare. So that, which is significant and also have planned design changes that hadn't happened for nine years. And so we did that, we'll be coming forward, I believe, May twenty-fourth in executive session with the SRP contract. That was approved by the, the SRP and approved by the school committee and now it needs to go to the council. So we did what we're asked to do, but we also were able to negotiate language that will help us moving forward. And, and I think you'll see that when we sit down with the council in executive session over that. We have many maintenance and tradespeople that add to that maintenance component that we are required to meet, but that saves us money. We have electricians, because plumbers, mechanics, HVAC, we have carpenters. And so a lot of the work that's done, you missed it, Mr. Martin does a phenomenal job managing this. That saves us money every single day, there are districts that don't have this and are paying, bringing in professionals for every, every single need that they have. We couldn't, we couldn't afford to do that, we, we, you know, we're, we're very fortunate, but this saves us money on an ongoing basis. And then I mentioned this before, but we look at student enrollment on an ongoing basis and adjust staffing accordingly. I think that's truly important to understand, you know, there was a comment made, somebody had said to me, you know. I made comments about we can't cut our way out of this, but don't equate that with the fact that we don't look at positions, what our needs are. You know, we do as close to zero-based budgeting as I think is possible. We look at every single area and build from that, you know, the number of teachers we have is, is based on what we offer students in class size. And if you've gone in our classes fifteen years ago and you go into our classes today, you're going to be, see a significant increase in class size across the board. So these are things we can go through fairly quickly, but. I think it's important again, that despite a pandemic, despite the budget issues that we have had as a community, there's a lot of good that's going on. And, you know, Dr. Dixon always talks about the story, what's our story, right? I think we, our story is, this is a community that. We all should be proud of and we all should support, and these are some examples of what's going on in the public school. So our early childhood programs, which is crucial, we've invested in early childhood, we know the research on early childhood. We had our bright, our, our preschool programs were three-star. And over the last couple of years, working with the, the preschool teachers and it's incredible amount of work. We became a five-star Bright Stars Radiance, which is significant, it's as high as it can get. I mentioned the two grant-funded pre Ks programs, a million dollars over three years. We were only one of two public schools to receive these grants last year when we received them, and it was very competitive. Very proud to partner with Mr. Robalad, we have incredible relationship, he was the key author of this grant. We had a meeting today, we want to bring the council and the school committee on board. This is something that we think will transform our entire community. What better time, what, you know, than this period in our lives when we've all experienced trauma? So we're fortunate to have this grant and we're actually reworking it because we didn't spend as much money as we thought we were going to spend. So hopefully this grant will extend beyond the three years, going to four or five years because of the savings we've had during COVID. We received down from the Department of Ed, MTSS is Multi-Tierred Systems of Support School Climate Transformation Grant. It's for the high school, looking at how do we address social emotional behavioral needs? And so they've been working with the Center for Leadership and Education and Equity, CLEE. And working on looking at our programs in terms of how do we address student need. We're extremely proud of our unified program, this Chris Hoskins, phenomenal educator at the high school, really spearheaded this. This started with her and, and several students looking at, we make every student be included, feel included. And this has transgone from the high school to our teacher, our, our student leaders from the high school go down into the elementary school, the middle school. And we brought this movement and this is going to be some, a, something that Coventry is known for. We actually will be receiving a national recognition as a national unified school, the high school, and that'll be coming sometime in the spring. We also received the five thousand dollar grant from Hasbro to celebrate that. So there aren't many stu, schools in the country that are national unified schools, but we're very proud that our high school is one. And finally, the community partnership, C cap, police, you know, we're putting on the clinic with the EMA. And the, the chief and the fire and Department of Human Services. The, the libraries, Ms. Blumenthal, Mr. McGee at Department of Public Works has been a great partner this summer. When we started feeding, grabbing go lunches, he dedicated many of his staff to help us up over at Rice Field. So I believe we've created good, credible working partnerships with the entire community. Our CTE program, we have all of our middle school students now are being exposed to pathways and programs. We have piloted a program a couple of years ago to expose fifth grade students to CTE, we've expanded that, that was at Hopkins. Over nine hundred of our current high school students enrolled in, in one career pathway course, which is significant. If you watch our school committee meeting, you know, we had seventeen medal winners that we celebrated the other night, six are going to compete nationally. We continue to increase the numbers of high school students taking rigorous college-level honors and AP courses. When I first came on board, we had applied courses that weren't really tied to a standard and we've eliminated those. And again, encouraging students, all students to take advanced placement. We talked about the curriculum. We've completed the PE, Health, ELA, and pre-K curriculum. We're working currently on social studies, library, media studies, world language, and music. And we've piloted a math program at the middle school, but we'll continue to work on math, science, art, and special subjects. We have three Golden Apple winners, Ms. Martella, Ms. Lamar, Mr. Shen. We have numerous all-state and sample musicians selected for Coventry. We have Gold Key winner for the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, two National Merit Scholarship finalists this year. We have a Hobie Baker Character Award winner, second-place winner for the Ride App Design Challenge that we celebrated at our school committee. We had two winners in Congressman Langivin's art competition. This is significant. We have the second-longest distance in the national hammer throw by one of our, our, our student athletes this year, second in the nation. We had all-state concert participants. Our cheerleaders were the game-day cheer state champions. They'll be sitting on, on the field this coming Saturday night, seven o'clock, Princeton, where our high school football team will be competing for the Division Three Super Bowl. And then finally, we have Mr. Will Turner, who was president of the National Honor Society. Did his last meeting last night. He's also one of ten finalists for the Student Athlete of the Year award. This all happened during the pandemic. Many of these things happened despite the fact, if you remember, we didn't even have any of these activities in our budget. We were able to shift expenditures and really end the year with a bang. Test scores is spoken about often, and I'm not sure if Mr. Coward's on the call here or not. But if there's questions about this, he can answer those. You'll see that our ELA, these are eighteen, nineteen, the last year that we took them. We got the results that we've had growth and gains in, in, in every area, both in ELA and in math. And we know that this is not where we want to start, but this is a good beginning for us. And I, and I said before, as, as we do this curriculum work in ELA and math, we know now that with the professional development and the tools, that we'll see significant gains. This is a chart that just talks about ELA and, and some of the growth. You know, we saw an increase in our ranking in terms of four percent in the high schools testing ELA, forty-one percent in public high schools testing ELA. We show the student growth percentile in ELA increasing. And then you can see the, the percent meeting exceeding expectations in math. Again, we moved up four spots, and we saw the student growth percentile move from tenth, you know, to eighth in a, a public high school. So again, we know that we need to, to keep on improving, but we believe we're on the right track. And despite the pandemic, despite the, the funding issues that we've had, we've continued to progress and increase that, move that slope in the positive. We had our NEASC, it was actually a week before the pandemic hit. And these are some quotes, I know Dr. Dixon, I believe you were at the readout with Mr. Medic. I know Ms. Patno was there. That, and these are some quotes that you can look at from the NEASC team and feedback. We still have to come forward with the report to the school committee to go over this. The, the, the note on the curriculum work is that they, they felt that the process we put in place, that Mr. Coward has spearheaded with our teacher leaders and our administrators is a phenomenal process. We've already seen incredible gains in terms of the product, the curriculum work that's going on. But we were cited for it because we haven't completed the work. And when they came before, we, we hadn't completed the work. We had curricula that had not been worked on. I think Mr. Coward had said the health, health careers curriculum hadn't been worked on in like thirty years. I know the social studies was well over sixteen years ago. So we have not only a plan, but we've implemented that plan, and we're going to bring that plan to fruition. Make a difference in student test scores, we know that. We're always talked about and compared, and you know, we, we have this thing in Coventry where a lot of our families are looking towards Ponte Gansett. Well, number, we were number twenty-two. This is the U.S. News and World report that comes out in ranking. So most of the schools, except for Coventry, that were below us, were, were small schools, significantly smaller than Coventry High School. You're going to see that number twenty-one, if it was on the side, was Smithfield Public Schools. Smithfield, you know, in terms of the budgets and, and, and the resources, is a much different community in terms of what, what Coventry has had recently. Notice that Middletown, but what's real significant is notice number twenty-four, Ponte Gansett. So we rank higher than Ponte Gansett in our test scores. We rank higher in terms of our SATs. And yet Ponte Gansett has had the resources, the funds, much smaller. So I want to give, despite the criticism that I hear often, we are moving in the right direction, and our people are working hard. We have incredible educators, incredible staff, incredible administrators, and with the support of the committee that we've had, we know despite the challenges, we continue to move in the right direction. But I think it's important for the council and the, the community to understand that. That often, you know, there's this perception, and, and somebody, I met with someone the other day, perception is reality, but this is the truth. These are the facts behind the reality, right? So looking at this, it's. And then finally, just our three- or five-year projections and goals that, you know, we have put a lot of effort. You know, there are several of you that have also been involved with the school building committee. That's, you know, not a single one percent out, but Mr. Murray's done an incredible job spearheading, leading the building committee and the work that we're doing. And our goal, and our goal continues to be, have a state-of-the-art middle school that will impact all the students that are moving through our system. And let's remember, despite what goes on, and we talk about students leaving, most people that come to Coventry, that, that move here, their children, and most people who live here, their children are going to go to the Coventry publics. We are here, we're here for the long haul, and we have a responsibility to become the best that there is. And we believe this state-of-the-art middle school will enhance the, the learning environment for all students that move through our, our, our school community. We talked about the strategic promotion of the vision of the graduate. We plan on continuing to increase our Coventry CTE enrollment, expand CTE, you know, career opportunities to the middle and elementary schools. We mentioned some of the ways that we've been doing that. I think it's realistic that we, we have a target to increase test scores by twenty percent. That curriculum work we're doing is so significant because it, it's involved with also, you know, formative assessment. So we can see the work and the growth that's taking place on an ongoing basis. We're able to shift our instructional strategies based on student need. And then the targeted interventions. We talked about multi-tiered system of supports. Part of that is identifying certain students and matching specific targeted interventions to those students, not just social-emotional, I mean, academic, but also social-emotional. And then our ultimate goal is to be recognized as one of the top public schools departments in Rhode Island. So I appreciate your patience with me going through that. That is my presentation, our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Before we move on to our town manager, Mr. Marshon's presentation, I would like to ask the members of the public questions that they might have about the school budget. And I'd like to ask our chairman, our chairperson Patno, to recognize people who are in the queue who would like to ask questions at this time about the school budget.
Looks like we have wanted one hand up, if someone could bring them in.
Bringing them in now?
Thank you.
Good evening, Hillary Lima, thirty-one Edward Street. Thank you, Mr. Levis, for your presentation. Really appreciate the insight and to see all the great things that are happening in the school system and the upward trend of momentum. I just had two questions. One, is the version of the budget that was posted on the schools, school department website dated March twenty-first, is that the most, still the most recent budget available to see broken out by line items like that?
This, this should be on the front page of our website. This, this presentation, I should have said that before. This, this is on our, our website. There is the most current budget is on there, so, but this was put on our website today. So you'll have the summary page. But I believe the budget that was, there is a budget that was approved by the school committee on, I believe, April fifteenth that should be on our website under District Information. I think it's under Finance.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
I'll be sure it's up there. If it's not, but it, it should be up there on our website. But this presentation should be on our homepage of, of our website.
Okay. And then if you could just help me better understand, in that version of the budget, I'm sure it's the same in the newer version, but the, there are certain lines in the summary, and then in the line items that are highlighted red, I'm assuming to designate state aid. Can you help me understand the, the, the notes on that? And just because I was trying to figure it out in my head, why some were highlighted red? And, and it didn't seem like the line items that were highlighted red added up to the state aid. So I just was wondering if you could help.
So we just, I mean, I think we highlighted the, the red on the state aid was just to show that there was an increase of six-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars. The original budget we were expecting was to be level funded. And then I believe it was in, it might have been March eleventh, Department of Ed had posted a state aid number for Coventry that was six-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, or I think it's six-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars higher than what we were told. So that's why we highlighted the red, and that the number below it was, or is our tuitions. And the footnote to that is we're concerned if that number is accurate, that tuitions are still tenuous. That we're not sure, you know, if students that we have will be here, leave. We've lost some students to homeschooling, will they come back? So that's what we budgeted, that's what we projected, but we wanted, we need to continue to watch that number, and that's why that was highlighted.
Okay. And we don't anticipate getting confirmation on numbers from the federal government to know how that will factor in before it's time to vote on June tenth?
When you say federal government.
The relief funds from, from the federal government, that.
So we do, we, we were promised, so we have numbers, right? We have numbers, but we were promised that we would be able to apply for the funds. Because the way it works is that we're, right, the Department of Ed will use a system called Excela Grants. And they populate the grant, the amount of funds that we have, that we're out. And then we have to apply for those through the grant process. Three, four weeks ago, we were told we'd have that system in place within a week. They just had a meeting Tuesday, yesterday, with the Superintendent's Association. And Deputy Commissioner, Mrs. Anne O'Reilly, said, "Well, I'm hearing that it might be up next week." So the, the challenge for us is that we've been told an amount, but until it's populated, once it's populated, we know that's the exact amount we have. So, but once it's confirmed, you know, we will, we will share that confirmation. We believe it's in the ballpark of what we've been told. And those funds are one-time funds, and those funds need to be, S R two funds need to be spent by September thirtieth of 2022. And the S R three funds, which are, yes, or two is the funds that President Trump allocated. S R three are the funds that President Biden allocated. Those funds need to be expended by September thirtieth of 2023. And I think those are the, that's the plan that we talked about, Ms. Lima, where we go before the school committee with a plan to, to, you know, to allocate some of the funds, and we get approval from the school committee through that process. So any, that's how we'll be going, using those funds, any funds that we have or any ideas, we have to go before the school committee to get approval.
All right, that's helpful, thank you. And then lastly, I'm just hoping that either Mr. Sands or Mr. Levis or any members of the school committee, if you could help me feel more at ease and more comfortable about using one-time funds for two-point-one million dollars in new personnel, they're needed. I, I'm not arguing whether or not they're needed, but it just seems like we're setting ourselves up to have a structural deficit conversation again next year. And I, it almost feels like the equivalent of me taking my tax return and using it on daycare, and then it runs out. And it's like, okay, how am I going to pay for daycare next, you know, in the few months? So I just, if someone could just help me feel more at ease about, instead of just saying, "We'll figure it out later", that, that would be, would be great help, thank you.
I'll start, and then Mr. Sands wants to jump in, and the school committee members. But I think when I was, all those positions that we talked about, with the exception of the custodians and, and the nurses, we know, we need them right now for targeted instruction, targeted interventions for students to provide more support. And that's one of the strategies. You know, we're not saying that majority of those positions will, will stay. We know that those are one-time positions, but we need that influx of interventions for students right now. The positions I talked about, the custodians, the custodians, we had cut, I say we, probably, you know, these positions were cut back in the early two thousands, honestly. We had twelve more custodians. When you have failing buildings, right, when you haven't invested in capital, you need to maintain new buildings. So, you know, there was a decision, probably because it was easy just to cut custodians, because people said, "Well, they're not in front of kids", but, you know, probably, you know, in hindsight, it wasn't the best decision. Because of the pandemic, we realized that we, there's no way we could have opened schools without additional support. So we put on those additional custodians. But I know as superintendent, how can I say we don't need to keep our buildings clean moving forward? And so that's, and I think I said, that's our responsibility to figure out how we can fund those moving forward. And I think I had mentioned some of the strategies we're doing to, to reduce expenditures moving forward. And they're in the presentation. And if you have any questions, and just, you know, Ms. Lima, not, you know, my plan is to reach out to you tomorrow to, to try to get you to come in to sit with myself and Mr. Sands to tell, you know, so that you can be comfortable with the budget, or at least understand it. So, because I know, I, I heard you, you know, I heard you say that how you're coming in on your, your radio interview, you know, coming in at a certain time, we want to make sure that you're up to speed, and any questions you want to answer. I mean, ask, feel free to ask, and, and we've offered that to the entire community, but I hope you don't mind, we'll reach out to you tomorrow.
I appreciate that, thank you very much. And you're in an enviable position, and I appreciate you answering my questions and look forward to, to, to meeting with the both of you soon, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure, do we still have another attendee with their hand up? Or is that Hillary's hand still?
It's Ms. Lima, there's no other request for comment.
All right, thank you. Okay, wait a, wait a couple of seconds, I guess.
Madam Chair, my hand up.
Oh, yes, hold on one second. I'm just, we're, I was just waiting, just a second. All right, Mr. Florio.
I just want to congratulate Ms. Lima on being the District Four Council person. Whatever she needs, whatever information she wants, I'm here. And I think she's going to make a great partner between school committee and council in District Four. Thank you, Madam Chair, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Are there any other school committee members that would like to comment on our presentation? I don't see any hands raised, President Dixon, so I guess you can proceed with the town side.
Thank you. Are there any members of the Coventry Town Council who would like to ask any questions about the school budget? Mrs. Shockley.
I don't have any questions about the budget at the moment, but I do really appreciate learning some of the things going on in the school. As a council member and a parent, it's nice to see the different, all the different programs that the students do. And when those students succeed, it's even better to see that. You know, I also really appreciate that slide on grants that you're receiving and ways that you're trying to cut expenses and even use your COVID funds in a way that right now, you're going to be able to purchase things that will alleviate expenses in the future. So seeing a plan is really helpful for me, and I really appreciate it. And, you know, I really appreciated being able to speak with Mr. Levis and Mr. Sands the other day just to get a better understanding myself, and recommend community members do the same if they have the time and the opportunity.
Thank you. Any other comments by members of the council? Mrs. Miss Ludwick.
Thank you, President Dixon. Thank you, Mr. Levis and, and school committee for joining us. I just have one or two questions on the presentation because I, my acronyms are, are not making sense. I'm trying to figure out some of these on the presentation. So there was one slide, Coventry High School here is NEASC team feedback. Can you just confirm what the NEASC feedback was?
I, yes, it's, was it New England Association of School and Colleges, I believe? Am I correct? And typically, just, you know, I, I usually don't do those. I usually spell out because Mr. Pearson has gotten me into the habit of. And and typically, just, you know, I I usually don't do those. I usually spell out, because Mr. Pearson has gotten me into the habit of. You know, in 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 a good way, reminding me that. People don't understand these acronyms, so I apologize, but yes, it's New England Association of Schools and Colleges. It's accreditation. A a branch that all schools, uh, we've talked about this before in budgeting, you know. As Dr. Dixon will say, sometimes it's perceived as. Scare tactic, and we just say that there's certain things we have to do to receive accreditation, and the ask will say. You've got ten years to do this, five years to do this, so. But that's what that is. We had a a a visit right before COVID. Um, it was a phenomenal visit. It culminated with. Them seeing fifteen hundred students in our gym for a unified basketball game. It was the current. Unified team versus the alumni. And they knew that this was representative of the culture of Coventry High School. You couldn't fake that environment for a visiting team. And so, uh, they, you know, my hats off to the high school and. The the teachers and the administration, the support staff, custodians, I mean, they. They knocked it out of the park and Dr. Dixon and, uh, Ms. Patno were at the readout there, and I think they can attest, so. But my long-winded way of answering your question of the ask.
Okay, thank you. And then, um. Uh, one of the things I just wanted to point out, so I've been in, um, Rhode Island for just shy of five years. Um, and I I hear a lot about, um, Foster Gloucester. And, um. I did, after Mr. Coward, uh, in our last session had said, hey, U S News and World Report just came out. With Coventry High School, and I went and looked it up and you highlighted it, um, on the screen for us earlier. It's just, it's so surprising to see. You know, the they're ranked lower than us, their, um, their graduation rate is lower than us, it's, it's just, um. It's just very surprising to see that you you walk in with this perception. And then we start seeing what are some of the facts, where are we ranking? Um, you know, what are we spending on a per pupil basis? You know, that type of thing. So I I think that it's, it's definitely worth. Um, going into the budget line items, um, I I joined you and Mr. Sands earlier this week. Um, I, you know, I encourage anyone from the public who has questions. To reach out to your school committee member or directly to Mr. Levis, um, or Mr. Sands. Uh, this was very easy to to go over, once we sat down in person. Um, and I certainly, um, I certainly appreciate the transparency here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the council would like to speak or ask a question? Okay, um, I would just reiterate what Mrs. Shockley and Mr. Ludwig, Ms. Ludwig mentioned, and that is. Mr. Levis invited, um, members of the town council to go over and meet with him individually with Mr. Sands to. Make sure that we understood the school budget and had any questions that we had answered. And also Mr. Marshon, our town manager, has also invited members of the public to come in to meet with him. And also to meet with any of the department heads, get a tour of the facilities, et cetera. So both sides have, uh, extended themselves, uh, very graciously numerous times to members of the public. Who want to have some questions answered and just to feel more comfortable with with the budgets. Um, and I also would like to mention that I'm happy to see slides on cost-saving methods and I'm happy to see that the story. Uh, come to start to come together, uh, what are the things that are being done in the school system? That show improvement, a steady improvement, um, over time. And where are we heading in the future? I think that slide, that story is very important and needs to be disseminated to the public, so I was very happy to see it. So thank you so much for that. Um, any other members of the council like to ask any questions or members of the school committee before we move on to the, uh, the town presentation? Okay, Mr. Marshon, our town manager is, uh, ready to present, um, the town budget. Mr. Marshon.
All right, can you see my screen okay?
Yes, perfectly.
Excellent. Uh, thank you, Madam President, and good evening, uh, members of the town council, members of the school committee, town staff. And the public joining us tonight. To participate in this first public hearing on the town budget for the next fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty two, which will begin July first. It's coming right up. The town budget is a statement of the values and priorities of the people of the town of Coventry. It sets forth the public services and programs that are important to the community. And the level of service that is expected to be delivered with the commensurate level of funding. The town's budget is not a brand-new thing to provide new services that have never been provided before, rather. It reflects the changing values and priorities for funding municipal service, services from one year to the next. Therefore, it is important to note. That the decisions that were made last year have had a big impact on the budget that is being contemplated this year. Likewise, the decisions that the voters will make on a budget this year will have a significant impact on what the budget situation will be next year. I really believe that today's decisions determine tomorrow's opportunities. While there won't be any decisions made tonight. I hope that this public hearing will help everyone prepare to make a more informed decision when it comes time to vote on a budget. The proposed budget that has been advertised, um, balances. It has a proposed levy increase of three point nine five percent, which will restore some of the cuts. That were made to several departments and programs, uh, areas in the last, in the current year budget. And it will sustain the current level of services being provided by Coventry Public Schools and Town Operations. So I've gotten the question, how will level funding impact my services? As a resident taxpayer, you want to know the bottom-line impact of what will you get? For your taxes or what will get cut if you don't approve the proposed budget as recommended? The community-wide services that the town provides with the hundred and twelve million dollar budget. Teachers, police officers, and other municipal employees are so broad that the impact may be difficult to quantify. If we were to assume that ten years ago, every program was fully funded and operating at one hundred percent of the public's expectations. And that each year the budget was passed with just a little bit less taxes to pay for that level of service. It would be almost impossible for anyone to tell what, if anything, was the impact. Therefore, it would only be logical to assume that the town was adequately funded and therefore no increase in the tax levy was needed each year. Let's face it. Who could tell the difference in the driving conditions of a brand-new road that is at a hundred percent? And one that is deteriorated to ninety-eight percent or ninety-six percent? I don't think anyone can, and I certainly cannot. However, after ten years of declining services, just about anyone could tell you how much better things had been ten years ago. You could be talking about schools, crime, roads, parks, programs, events, anything you can think of. So why is it that this happens? To illustrate, just looking at. Uh, the last few years on the next slide here, um. You had the twenty eighteen nineteen budget. And in twenty nineteen twenty, which was kind of a regular successive year, there were modest increases, uh, throughout the departments. However, in twenty twenty one, uh, there were significant cuts in certain departments. Uh, to meet the level-funded, uh, budget, the reduction in, uh, or the the lack of growth in revenues resulted in cuts to departments. And what we have in the proposed twenty twenty, uh, twenty one, twenty two budget. Is to restore much of the funding that had been cut last year and kind of restore those. Uh, departments to the previous, uh, levels of service. Uh, the only department that doesn't quite get fully restored is Parks and Recreation. Uh, because there's still, uh, budget constraints and limitations on. Uh, what we can do with the funds available, uh, and that is assuming a three point nine five percent levy increase. But, uh, I am confident that this proposed budget will be sufficient to meet the, uh, long-term needs and obligations. That the town has to maintain roads, vehicles, uh, sorry. It will meet the current funding levels for our services, but it doesn't begin to address the long-term needs and obligations that the town has. For the maintenance of roads, vehicles, heavy equipment. For paying down debt and making pension contributions and other contractual obligations. So we have other, uh, issues to look at, which I think for the long term is going to require a a strategic approach. To developing our community priorities, uh, saying what's important to us. And I hope to accomplish that with, uh, a lot of community input throughout the year. I I hope that, uh, there will be support to do a community survey. And, uh, maybe some workshops to get the public more involved in defining. How we're going to address some of these long-term, uh, needs. So in summary, what we have funded, um. Are a hundred and eighty point five seven full-time equivalent employees to perform municipal services. Uh, there's one additional employee in this year's budget over last year. Uh, to help in the assessments office, which is, uh, completely overwhelmed and understaffed. And, uh, six hundred and sixty-five full-time equivalents to perform education services, which, uh, Superintendent Levis has indicated. Uh, uh, an an increase of nine, uh, many of whom are going to be funded by their, uh, COVID stimulus, uh, funding. Uh, this budget restores funding to Public Works, Parks and Recreation, Library and Human Services. We, it has an allocation of five hundred thousand, uh, towards capital improvement projects. Which is just a drop in the bu- bucket for the six million dollars of identified needs. So, uh, we're gonna have to pick and choose carefully how best to invest, uh, those funds. And this budget holds the line on meeting or improving the service levels that have been provided in prior years without reducing hours of operation. For the town hall, the library, the police, the human services center, um, or any of their programs or services. The the town services are unique and that they cannot be automated, mechanized, or outsourced like you might do in a factory. It requires the conscientious effort of trained professionals to educate children and provide so many public services. Eighty-two percent of the school's budget and sixty-one percent of the town budget. Is just for paying the employees who do the work. And all of the operating expenses, uh, represent the necessary tools and resources that allow them to do their jobs well. Um, when it comes time to to cutting budgets, it's always a a painful, uh, process, because. You 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 can't cut the the resources so much that the remaining employees can't do their jobs and. Uh, for many years now, um, governments have been under a fine. Uh, tooth comb and microscope to, uh, reduce any excess. Um, waste or funding for many, many years, and so there isn't much left. And so the the decisions become more difficult with time. So what would the impact of this proposed levy be? We were able to run some numbers and the projected rate would. Increase from eighteen point nine seven per thousand to nineteen point six four. Uh, for an assessed valuation of two hundred thousand, uh, this would represent an increase of a hundred and thirty-four dollars per year. And then you can see the options for, uh, three hundred thousand dollars as value and a four hundred thousand dollars as value. Depending on the, uh, personal circumstances of the taxpayer, this may or may not be, uh, a large sum. I, we weren't able to run a scenario for a three point five percent, which is a, a. Uh, an option that I had raised Monday evening. Uh, but since it's almost exactly in half of four and zero, uh, you could pretty much. Take the difference in half to to see what that projected, um, tax levy impact would be. Looking beyond the budget, uh, there are a number of priorities that I've. I'd identified for going forward. Uh, the town, um, really does need to look at cost-reduction strategies and some opportunities. Uh, may be found in, uh, revising the fleet management program, uh, looking at lease, uh. Lease purchase options and and, um. I know prior to my coming here, uh, there was a lot of interest in doing a performance audit. Which I can say as the new town manager, uh, completely unfamiliar with Coventry and its history. And the relatively new, uh, finance director, uh, we really come through every department and every budget. To to look at their financial, uh, performance. Uh, but throughout the course of the year, we'll be measuring their actual, um, operation, uh, aspects of their performance. Uh, we'll look at revenue development. Uh, the sewer enterprise fund program, uh, needs a a new design and plan. Uh, that will be more sustainable and fair for, uh. Serving the needs of the, uh, users, uh, current and future. Uh, we need to look at recreation program services, uh, that are self-funded and self-sustaining. Uh, and fees per service, uh. We'll look at planning, uh, the, it's time to up- update the comprehensive plan. Uh, which has a ten-year outlook over the general trends and priorities of the community. Uh, I'd like to begin a strategic plan that looks really at the next year to the next five years on. Uh, what are the immediate, uh, priorities, uh, that the town should focus on to position, to position itself to accomplish its ten-year plan? And I mentioned the community survey earlier. Uh, we have a lot of capital projects needs, um. Like I mentioned, we have a a six million dollars worth of identified infrastructure, equipment, and facilities. And we need to look at that in terms of where will we get the most bang for our buck? To reduce, uh, future maintenance expenses and, uh, ensure that we have, uh, safe conditions for the public and the employees. Um, that are working and living in the community. And then we have a number of, uh, assets that, uh, we need to make some decisions about that are not part of the budget. Um, their their revenues that have already been received or we expect to receive in this budget year. Uh, but that could very well be used for, um, funding some of these other, uh, projects that have not been. Um, identified or budgeted in the, uh, proposed budget. So Coventry, go fund me. That's my message. Government is the original crowdsourcing strategy to have everyone pay as little as possible. To benefit from enjoying some really expensive things like schools, police, public works. Libraries, parks, human services, and and everything else that it takes to deliver those things. So, uh, I hope everyone, uh, that's listening will spread the word, please vote on the budget referendum June tenth. And get informed as much as you can, uh, Superintendent Levis and I are at your disposal. Uh, we'd love to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshon. Um, I'd like to see if there are, since this is a public hearing, I'd like to see if there are any members of the public who would like to speak.
There is one request for comment. I can bring them up now if you want.
Thank you. We'll take Ms. Doucette, please. Ms. Ms. Doucette, you're on, um, mute. Could you unmute yourself, please, so we can hear your question?
Uh, I'm sorry, I I didn't, I didn't mean to hit the hand. I don't have a question.
Okay, thank you. If you change your mind, we're here. Uh, Ms. Lima?
Back like a bad penny, um. Just a, a question on, um, one line item that was discussed, um, with Chief Heiss a couple of meetings ago when we were going. Department by department, was wondering if there was an update. It was discovered that, um. There was an increase in the repair and maintenance communication equipment line item for the coming year. Um, because they're trying to increase the radio signal in the western part of town. Um, to be able to have no dead zones when it comes to communicating. And I I think that there was discussion at the time that this was gonna be taken offline, because. The gentleman who I think you said owns the tower wants to lease. This for about thirteen grand a year and, um, it was something that was news to the council and the administration. So I was just curious where that stands and and if there are future for that was discussed.
So in that that meeting, it was, um, the question was whether it would be reoccurring, if it would, uh. You know, one-time deal, it would be a reoccurring fee for the, um. For the tower, the equipment rental, but putting the rental on there.
Okay, and and we're just, and I'm not sure if the, I think the town was gonna talk about. Of maybe other avenues for that, or if we were just settled on that we were gonna pay this every year, or. Just was wondering if any discussions took place. It didn't feel like it was settled when we talked about that line item in the last meeting.
So I can answer that, Chief. Uh, in short, it hasn't been settled and no decisions have been made. It's definitely on our radar to look at the contract and the situation. Um, maybe from a broader scope to. maybe from a broader scope to see what other options there may be. But we're going to be looking at all of our agreements, contracts throughout the town to make sure that the town is getting a good deal.
Okay, yeah, definitely not denying the need to alleviate dead zones for communication between officers. Just wondering if that's the most fiscally prudent way to move forward by leasing from this gentleman. Just curious. Thank you. That's my only question, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Lima. Other questions from members of the public? I don't see any other hands raised. We can go to, no members of the public, since this is a public hearing, we can go to members of the school committee who have a question. Mr. Florio, your hand is raised. You're on mute, Mr. Florio.
Technology, Madam Chair. I'm getting used to it, but I can do it. My question is for the town manager and maybe Jamie LeBlanc. What is, what is sewer empowering revenue? Is, does that mean the town's going to be dependent on sewer? Sewer revenue?
That slide said sewer enterprise.
Yes, sewer enterprise. I'm sorry, I wrote it down incorrectly.
The sewer, to the extent that the town already has a sewer program, it's intended to be run like any public utility where its own revenues pay for its own expenses. And we already have that. And based on the way it's been administered in the past, I believe that there's an opportunity to look at the design of the program to make it run better.
Ms. LeBlanc, do you agree with that? Jane?
I appreciate your question, Mr. Florio. The sewer enterprise fund is supposed to fund itself, but it has never done that in the past. But I think this is not a discussion topic for tonight, since we haven't discussed the budget for the sewer enterprise fund just yet. But I do appreciate your question.
Thank you. And that's it for me, Madam, Madam President. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Murray, did I see your hand up?
Yes, you did. Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Marshawn, I just had a question in regards to savings. So we presented a slide that had virtual net metering and some other savings that we've been looking at over the coming years. And I didn't see that, but I do know that the town has endeavored to look at savings, including virtual net metering, which I believe you're endeavoring on. I was just wondering on the status on that and also the, the Arnold Road landfill, which I believe was looking at solar, which may be one in the same, depending on how you're structuring those agreements. But do you have, can you give me an update on those or other saving measures you're doing at the current time or potentially going to look at?
Sure. So to some degree, they aren't really part of the budget because the solar would be a potential revenue that hasn't been identified because we haven't done an RFP yet and we don't have any proposed contracts we're looking at. We don't know what that would look like and what that would represent. With the net metering, you know, I'm not sure if that was a town venture or a school venture, but there was some venture that was entered into. And and my first days on the job, it came to my attention that we were paying exorbitantly more, not less, as a result of the contract. And that's an issue that is on my radar to look at because it just doesn't make sense. And I don't know if some accounts were overlooked or what, but we're going to be looking at that to make sure that that's going to work out for a cost savings. And you know, right now, the priority has been focusing on developing a balanced budget and getting every other question answered first.
Fair enough. I just, I knew Arnold Road was potentially coming online and I know it hasn't been fully vetted yet, but I, it's more to the point that you are looking at these things. And I do know the issue across the street with the solar. I'm glad to talk to you, but but you are looking at these cost-saving measures just like we are.
Yes, Mr. Goran, perhaps can discuss, we did have a net metering agreement associated with the first two turbines that went up in what is, is commonly called the Pacillo Farm. And I believe that that agreement did run out. Mr. Goran, could you speak on that, please?
Actually, I can't because that's one of the things that I, that I recused on several years ago, early in my tenure. I'm sorry about that, but because of that, I don't really have a great deal of knowledge. You might, I don't know if Mr. Warzika is available, but I know he has some knowledge about that.
Mr. Warzika, do you recall the details of that net metering agreement we had with WED relating to those two turbines on the Pacillo Farm?
Yes, ma'am. That, that agreement expired a number of years ago. And I have actually been in, in contact with them because of the contract that we've had with them and looking at reinstituting that. They've made some, some offers. And at some point in the very near future, that will be coming up in front of the council, as well as we are in process on the solar for Arnold Road. And we're back and forth and there's going to be an RFP that'll be issued very shortly on that. We're going to be anticipating about 100 to 125,000 dollars a year in passive revenue coming out of that solar on top of Arnold Road. But that is in process. We're in negotiations now and it will be coming up in front of the council in the not distant future.
Thank you, Ed.
Looks like we lost President Dixon.
Yes, it does.
Why don't we give her just one moment and then we'll, we'll resume and see if anyone else from the public would like to speak.
Internet sometimes in the western section isn't always the greatest.
Oh, this is a big moment. I'm going to take over the meeting. Oh, shit. We'll give her, we'll give her 30 more seconds.
I forgot the question.
She felt that deep in her soul.
I forgot. Oh, yeah, yeah, I remember.
Okay, so while we're waiting for President Dixon, why don't we, why don't we call on the next person? Mr. Florio, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. And I do believe I'm unmuted. Very good. So my, my question is, was, is Hillary, Ms. Councilwoman Lima aware of the wind turbines that will be going up on Arnold Road? That's my question. Was she, was she made aware of that?
I'm not aware of any wind turbines going up on Arnold Road, so I'd like to see if maybe we can find out a little more information before we, before we pose questions.
Yeah, I agree.
If that'd be okay, Mr. Florio.
Oh, sure. But I agree. I haven't heard anything about that until this evening.
It's solar panels, Mr. Florio.
Oh, it's solar panels?
So it would be on top of the, you know, the green that was put over?
Yes.
The landfill? So we're looking at a contract to put solar on just the top of that part of the green part of the landfill.
I, I think Ms. Lima should be involved in that process because I know she walked that district. And I know I've heard some residents like it, some residents don't, some residents are very much against it. But I, I'm not because I see the value of it and it doesn't seem to be a problem. But I, you know, she's, I have to work with Hillary, so. And she's a great person, but these are issues she should know about as well, you know, so. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Florio.
Thank you.
Can I open us back to the council? Does Ms. Shockley or Mr. LeBlanc like to pose a question to Mr. Marshawn? Mr. LeBlanc?
I just have a comment, not a question. There was a slide that showed the impact related to the increase of the 3.95. It said 200K was $134, 300K was $201, and 400K was 268. So I just wanted to reiterate to the taxpayers listening that a $200,000 home with the increase, it would be $3,928. A $300,000 home would be a $5,892 tax. And then for a $400,000 home, it would be $7,856 in totality. So I made a comment last meeting that I, I don't think it's appropriate just to look at the increase. It's, it's appropriate to look at the full amount of the tax.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Ms. Shockley?
No, I don't have any questions this evening. I was, I'm looking forward to hearing from the public.
We'll take one more pause to see if we have anyone from the public who'd like to speak. This is a public hearing. We, we would love to hear from the public.
There's one request, Ms. LeBlanc. I can bring them in if you want.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Hello?
Hello. It looks like this is Michelle. Can you please give your full name and your address?
Yes, Michelle Cohen to Driftwood Drive. I'm, I really don't have any questions. I actually just want to thank and appreciate everything that you guys have done. I have sensed a different vibe with the new town council and, you know, just a little bit more reaching out to the community and really kind of putting yourselves out there to answer questions. And I just want to say that I appreciate it. And I know as a parent, I think that the town working with the schools is definitely something that I also find very beneficial as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak? I'll take a pause from the public side then and offer a few comments of my own. So thank you, Mr. Marshant, for, for reviewing the, the budget and the, the updated slides. Earlier this week, I went out on my own social media platform and I addressed the constituents in District Two and those who follow me on Facebook. And I asked them to think about the type of Coventry that they'd like to live in. And I also turned that question inward towards myself. I don't just want to exist in Coventry. I want my family to live here, to thrive here. And so for me, looking at the budget that we've put in front of us, I need to think about, is this reasonable? Is this where I see myself and my family? Are we addressing the needs of the community for people who do and don't have children? And so I do think that there are many aspects of this budget that cover those areas. And there are some bigger questions like, Mr. Marshant, you have listed out areas that we need to focus on later in the year that we certainly need your help with and which is why we've brought you in. And so I do want to address the public and let you know that we are willing to listen. I've been able to sit down with almost all of the people on this call and the people that you see in front of you. We want to listen. We want to hear what the concerns are. There are still a few, a few weeks left before we actually vote on the actual budget that goes in front of the voters. Personally, I'm thinking about what this budget means to my family and I and to the voters in my community. And I'm excited about what the work is in front of us that you'll be able to see through passing a budget similar to this. So I would like to ask if there's anyone from the public that would be willing to share with us, what is your vision for Coventry? How do you see this budget either helping or not helping in that aspect? If anyone would be willing to share now or even talk with any of us offline, I know we would love to hear that feedback.
I'm not on again.
President Dixon, welcome back.
Thank you. I must need that new cell tower out here very quickly.
We were just encouraging the public to offer some thoughts on what type of Coventry that they'd like to live in or what type of budget and services they'd like to see come from this process. And I'm hoping we can open it back to the public to see if anyone might be able to offer us some of their thoughts.
Excellent question. Is there anyone on? Thank you, Ms. Ludwig. I appreciate you taking over. Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc, to ask me what was happening to me. I don't know. I've shut down, started, but anyway, we'll move forward. This is the first meeting I've missed, even part of it. So it breaks my record and I was very proud of my record. Okay, who, who is on to ask us these questions?
There's no public requests at the moment.
Well, I'm a little, I'm a little disappointed that we have only 36 attendees on. But you know, those of you who are on and those of you who are in the community, you all know the email addresses and the telephone numbers of all the members of the school committee and the town council members. We'll all be reaching out to people in our communities and we want your feedback because we do want to present a budget that will be very successful and that will provide for the needs of the members of the community. You can see that we have many new people on staff now. We have a new town manager, a professional manager. We're very happy to have him with us. We have a new financial director, Ms. Lisa Mills. They've both been working very hard together to put, get, put together a very comprehensive budget in record time. We have Mr. Harold Sands, who is a new financial director for the school committee. And everyone has been working very, very diligently in order to get the budget ready for all of you to enjoy. Any other questions?
Madam President, there is one request from the, from the public.
Excellent. We have, we have a request from Lisa. Lisa, please identify yourself by first name, last name, and your address, please.
Lisa Moran, 74, West area drive.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you very much. So I was just wondering, so it looks like it's either, we're voting on either 3.95% or, or what, level funded? Those, those are the only two options?
Mr. Marshawn can address that question for you.
Yeah, so in my presentation, I was just showing what the, the change in tax would be based on the proposed balanced budget of 3.95%. During my presentation at the work session on Monday evening, I had recommended an alternate three and a half percent levy increase as being somewhat less but adequate. It would require some reductions to be made on both the school and town side in order to meet that. But it would be feasible to do. And so right now, I believe the town council is looking for feedback from the public as to what services are desired and what level of budget is appealing or supportable.
Lisa, in addition to that, we're having another public hearing on Saturday. One of our council members, Mr. LeBlanc, suggested that we have a public hearing on Saturday morning in the hopes that those people who were unable to attend a meeting during a weekday would be able to attend on Saturday. So we're going to have another public hearing on Saturday and the council will then formally receive a recommendation for Mr. Marshant on May 17th. And it's that meeting that the council will either vote to approve, amend the budget that he recommends.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mrs. Shockley?
So I just wanted to read some items that constituents have sent to me. One constituent did ask for the breakdown, the way you had done it, Mr. Marshant. So thank you. Based on the value of your home. So thank you, based on the value of your home, what the proposed levy would actually add to and make her tax bill. Um, she also reached out to ask about the possibility of separating out the town and school budgets, which I was looking in our charter and I couldn't tell if it was there. Um, or something that we could in the future possibly, um, look into, at least discuss and hear what, um, both council members, school committee and residents think of that idea. Um, I also had a person who answered Jen's question. Um, and this is just to provide the rest of the council as we move forward with some feedback of what a resident is looking for. Um, and she's looking for a Coventry that's more up to date. Um, the infrastructure of the schools and town buildings is poor. Um, the websites are hard to navigate. I think in some cases we're getting that taken care of. I think the school's working on theirs. Being able to pay our bills online, being able to go online and not just download forms about committees and boards, but be able to actually see what those committees and boards do. Um, you know, what sort of commitment is required and what you would be able to contribute by being on that board. Also possibly, um, what you would need to have for qualifications. Um, she mentions having one outlet per classroom at her daughter's elementary school. And the fact that some of our elementary schools you can see are not able to fundraise as well as others. So how might we be able to help with that? Because different districts have different economic needs. She's looking to get more of a main street, have our buildings filled, um, be able to start having some commerce and industry in town. Um, she talks about a farmer's market. Um, when I see that, I think at least some sort of community event, something that makes us think of Coventry, um, makes us think that, um, people want to come here and our own residents would like to go to that event. Um, as far as our municipal services, she said she expects weekly trash pickup, roads fixed. Uh, she wants, she likes the library, options for bulk trash pickup and parks and rec facilities and upkeep, uh, maintenance of town properties, mentioning Brayton Avenue Beach specifically, which I apologize, I don't know from. Um, she says snow plowing as well as typical building stuff, um, such as zoning and licensing. And as a whole, she's fairly happy with current town services. So it's nice to hear that from a resident. The type of education she would expect, she'd like to see the new school building, combining a few of the elementary schools. And I think she's also looking at other towns that don't seem that dissimilar to Coventry, but she's, you know, sometimes the grass just looks greener, but mentions the main streets that they have, the downtown areas that they have, the school buildings that they have. Um, so we all moved to Coventry, I think, to give our families and ourselves the best. And I think that's what this particular resident is looking for. So, you know, not everyone wants to raise their hand, but she did raise it through email. So I thought I would at least put out there to the council what she had to say.
Thank you for the valuable input and really appreciate the uh, community member who reached out to you to give such an extensive list of things that she would like to see improved. Um, I also had a very extensive conversation with someone in the community um, who I would consider to be an influencer. He has a wide range of social networks. And I said to him, what would it take to pass this budget? And he said, you know, we would be willing to pass whatever budget that the town council would recommend. But what may we expect that will be different next year than we have seen in the past? In other words, councils have gone to the public and asked for increases, but they haven't seen anything different. And they want to know what will be different moving forward. And of course, we have a whole new leadership team by especially like Mr. Marchand's slide that said priority objectives. And I'm wondering if you could bring that up again, Mr. Marchand, because I think it's important. It gets to the root of some of the questions Mr. Murray has asked and also some of the things that are thoughts in people's minds.
Uh, let's see. Is it this slide that you meant?
Yeah, it is. It is this slide. Um, you'll notice that, um, we have, looking at cost reduction strategies. We talked about a possible performance audit that would focus not necessarily on finances, but on the performance of the, of the departments. And if we were to be able to fund a performance audit, it would be for the school and for the community, the municipal government. And we made a commitment to do that. Um, also looking at a fleet management program, uh, Mr. Marchand, could you explain what a fleet management program looks like?
Sure. Um, so traditionally governments will buy vehicles on a state bid list. And they typically get it at close to wholesale rates. But you're paying for the entire vehicle lump sum in cash for the current year. And then you keep that vehicle on the road as long as you possibly can. Um, right now we have a fleet of 45 vehicles and I believe 30 of them are over 10 years old. And so when you have this aging fleet, it becomes very expensive to maintain in the annual maintenance and repairs. And it becomes very expensive because you have to replace many of them all at once. And what a lease, uh, fleet, affiliate management program using a lease option, uh, you can, uh, start replacing your oldest vehicles right away with brand new leased vehicles. Uh, you're only putting down a lease payment. So you're paying a fraction of a price in the first couple of years. And then as your, um, fleet renews itself, you, um, you sell the leased vehicles after a few years while they still have a high value in the market. And the proceeds from those sales can further reduce your continued leases and replacement of older vehicles. So the, the program is designed to essentially replace the entire fleet in 10 years so that none of your vehicles are older than six or seven years old. So you get a, a, a brand new fleet of nice vehicles that don't require a lot of maintenance. And the beauty of it is that you're not paying any more for your fleet in year 10 than you were in year one. It level funds your fleet operations by having it kind of pay back into itself and replenish the value from year to year.
Uh, thank you. Um, so among the cost reduction strategies that we have discussed is really doing a cost benefit analysis for many of the programs that we are now running to determine what are efficient and what are effective and what might we do to improve those programs. Um, in the area of revenue development, I know you covered this in your first presentation, but perhaps you could expand a little bit more about what we're looking at uh, going forward for ways by which we might be able to develop more revenue to come into our community.
Sure. Um, well, the, I'm not sure what you're, you're thinking of, but for instance, in fees for service, I find it more the exception than the rule to provide, uh, trash hauling services as part of your tax bill. Uh, it's an individualized service and, uh, it is most common to have that as a fee for service. And so if we were to remove the, uh, $1.5 million that the sanitation program, uh, expense represents in the general fund and, uh, turn that into a fee for service, then that would free those funds to be expended on our, uh, capital projects and needs to improve facilities and, uh, fleets and heavy equipment and roads and, uh, address all of the other many community needs that we have. And so, uh, while that would represent a fee increase, uh, fees are user-based. So if you use it, you pay for the cost of what you're using, uh, rather than a tax which, uh, may or may not have any relationship to the service that you're providing.
Thank you. And a gentleman to whom I spoke also mentioned that, you know, the town doesn't have, seem to have any three, five or 10-year strategic plan. Um, and you'll notice that, um, we've been talking about having a community survey so that we could better understand the needs of the members of the community, a little bit more about the profile of the members and what services they would really appreciate and be willing to, to support. So that's in the works. Uh, we also are going to be developing a strategic plan and our, uh, new manager has had a great deal of experience in developing strategic plans. And, uh, we're looking forward to, to start working on that. Uh, there has also been a lot of talk within the last year of updating our comprehensive plan. We did approve as a council going out and trying to get bids for a comprehensive plan. No one responded. We're going to go back into the marketplace again and determine if we can get um, a very good professional company to come in and do a comprehensive plan. Uh, we know that a comprehensive plan will take approximately a year and a half. Um, but once we have a comprehensive plan that is updated, we know that that will set the stage for us to update many of our audiences that people have, uh, said to us really need to have an updating. So we've got things in the works for planning that stretches us more than one year to one year to one year. We're looking at a three to five-year program by which we can really set a vision. Just as Mr. Superintendent Levis said, they have a vision for the student. Um, we have a graduate, we have a vision for what our town can be. And we believe very strongly in the opportunities that are here in our town. Um, and we need to do planning to make it happen. Uh, for capital projects, maybe Mr. Marchand, you can talk a little bit about capital projects and how these are some priority items for us.
Sure. Uh, I'm gonna jump back into my, um, other slides from the other day. Uh, because that did a lot better job showing some of the capital needs that we have. There we go. So like I said, we have an allocation of $500,000 proposed for the, um, 2021, 22 budget. Uh, but as you can see, um, Public Works needs a number of heavy equipment vehicles, uh, dump trucks, freight liner, six-wheel dump truck, a bucket truck, uh, a mini excavator, brush chipper. Uh, it costs a lot to work on roads and he proposes, uh, um, I, I have one-fourth of the town, but it should be one-fifth because he proposes to spend about $250,000 per year in each district over five years. Obviously, that kind of investment can't be achieved with $500,000 uh, because the one and a quarter million is far exceeds that in the first year. But, um, this is a list of things and this, uh, these slides are on the town's website under the finance and budget documents, uh, so that anyone wanting to look at this list, uh, more closely can, can see it. Uh, but it also includes police vehicles and parks and recreation, basketball courts and community center and that sort of thing. Uh, we do have some photos to go along with them. Um, if you don't know what the Tyod Lake Gatehouse is, it's a mechanism that controls the floodway and maintains the level of the lake and protects properties downstream from, uh, potential flooding. Uh, and that structure is getting very old and difficult to maintain and we may not be able to prevent a failure. Uh, we have a number of vehicles. Um, you can see the body rust, the, the wear and tear. Um, having vehicles that are used this heavily since 1999, it's amazing that they can even be pulled out on the road. And so it's really important that we replace these vehicles in order to do the snow removal and in order to patch the streets and do a lot of the services that everyone expects to just happen. But they don't just happen. And, um, a lot of times the Public Works is very frustrated because their own equipment is in the way of other equipment getting fixed because there's so much repair and maintenance that needs to be done that they can't get out on the road to do the actual work that they're supposed to do. So, uh, if you have any questions about that, again, uh, Director McGee and I would be happy to walk you through the Public Works yard. And you can see for yourself, uh, what the issues are with the equipment and what we're trying to accomplish. You know, this is a 1988 Morbach brush chipper and it's not reliable. It's not safe. Uh, and yet that's what we have, uh, at our disposal. A new one costs almost $40,000. Uh, but when we have to pick and choose about what our priorities are, um, chipping brush or paving streets, um, we'll probably be paving streets first. Plow, uh, those wear out over time and need to be replaced. Uh, they can be spendy. Uh, other vehicles, high mileage and, you know, like this, uh, 2011 Chevy Impala, 129,000 miles might not sound like a lot, but in police vehicles where they spend so much time idling, they're putting many thousands of hours on vehicles that aren't reflected by the mileage. We have, uh, you know, increasingly unsafe, unappealing conditions on our basketball and tennis courts. You know, the cracking, uh, we have pretty harsh weather here. The ice gets down and frost wedges, the, the cracks open wider and wider. And so those need to be maintained, uh, so that people can just enjoy playing on them. The public, uh, the Parks and Recreation Director, uh, Blumenthal, had actually shared a picture with me uh, of a playground with no playground equipment. Because when she got here, it was so splintery old and in disrepair that it was a safety hazard and it hasn't been replaced. So that's a, a service level that the community has lost over time. Any other, uh, anything else you would like me to speak about with regard to capital?
Uh, not at this time, but I just wanted, you know, the public to understand that there is a plan. There are priorities that you've already identified. We are engaged and will be heavily engaged in planning moving forward to improve our town based on sound financial decisions and community input concerning their needs. And I think those are important messages. Um, I noticed that Ms. Ludwig's hand is up.
Thank you, President Dixon. Um, I did get, um, a media request from a resident who asked if we could please provide some of the information from the last few years um, in terms of what type of budget was passed. Um, there seems to be some sort of perception that, um, you know, high increases have been approved over the last several years. Um, and to my knowledge, that's not the case, but I wouldn't be able to quote the exact uh, dollar amount. So is that something we might be able to provide? Uh, if not tonight, then on Saturday?
Certainly. Uh, all prior year budgets are posted on the website. Um, but we can, you know, when, uh, we prepared the budget, we're working on budget sheets that show the last 10 years and, you know, we, we can probably put together, uh, a slide or a PDF file that people can just use as a quick reference to see what the changes have been from year to year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for members of the council, members of the public or members of the school committee? Uh, Mrs. Shockley?
I just wanted to point out because someone, um, did ask that the revenue sources that we're looking at for the future are not things that have been, that are part of this budget or are, um, necessarily going forward. Uh, for instance, fees for service, um, it's something, you know, we will throw any idea out there and talk it through and see what sticks. But currently in this budget, that is not something that we are moving forward with.
That is correct.
Ben just got here.
My one-month anniversary is today. Thank you so much for inviting me.
Thank you to my anniversary.
Yeah, and he's already produced 100 slides per day of service, so. And many drafts and many iterations of it, and so has Ms. Mills. So, um, we've done, we've done very well. Thank you so much. All right. I don't see any more questions. So, um, dear person, Patna, would you please close your meeting?
Yes, thank you, President Dixon.
Yes, thank you, President Dixon. Could I have a motion to adjourn? I have 9 o'clock. Dave, you're on mute.
There we go. Hi. Hi, everybody. Madam Chair, I make a motion that we close meeting at 9:00 AM.
9:00 PM. I second the motion. Thank you to both of you. Could you just raise your hand? And I see 5. So motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson Patno, and thank you to Superintendent Levis. I noticed that Assistant Superintendent Cowitt is on the call with us today and also all members of the school committee. Members of the council may have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Ludwig. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mrs. Shockley. Roll call. Raise your hand, please, if you would like to adjourn. No yays, no nays. The motion is adjourned at 9:01. This is a record for us. Good evening, everyone.
Night.
Good night.